Good morning, this is Friday, July 24th. This is the Teuton Borough Board of Selectmen at the town offices. For a work session with Jim Bean to discuss highly related items and other business that may come before the board. Members of the public wishing to attend this meeting electronically, please join from your computer, tablet, or smartphone. Slash slash global dot go to meeting dot com slash join slash nine nine six four three three nine four one. And also listen toll free one eight seven seven three oh nine two zero seven three. Access code nine nine six dash four three three dash nine four one. Please note that you'll be able to interact during public input using the online service. However, you will only be able to listen to the meeting via telephone. If you have any issues, please contact six oh three five six nine five nine oh three. We're still all set, Karen?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Mr. Bean, welcome, how are you?
Good thanks, how are you?
You have a report for us?
Yes. Okay, so since last time we met, the water line section was paved and it looks pretty good with the exception, it needs a little more paving around the, a little more hot top around the catch basin on one side. Some of these didn't go all the way around it, which is a little unusual.
Did they also contour it up?
They could, but I do want water to come from the grass or into it if possible to the water.
What was suggested to me, and you and I talked about this, is first of all, it keeps the bank from eroding. It also protects the trailers on trucks as radius, turning radius, you know, the tracking. And I saw, I've already seen a couple go over the grass. And the other thing is, you've educated to me that the first couple of clouds gone, the last storms, there's very little frost on the ground. It doesn't take much for a wing to, you know, destroy the lawn, so.
Absolutely.
You know, here again, I'm repeating things that you've educated me on, so, thank you.
But I did talk to Frank Carroll about that and they will repair that, they will add to us. It's not a big job, it's probably a wheelbarrow, a wheelbarrow foot of hot top.
So are they coming back?
They are.
You need to do something at the end of Federal Corner Road. At the junction of Middle Road?
Oh, so that's a different company.
Okay.
They have another company that does the small work.
Okay.
That will do some other stuff for us. We actually have a quote from them already to do the Duragan square. And we'll have them do some repairs for us. They do work like that. The bigger companies don't really do that. And this company specializes in working with other larger companies doing small work like that.
Yeah. Because regardless of what we'd like to have happen, that becomes a parking spot for the store across the street. So maybe we need to extend that out a little bit into this pitch line. Because I'm sure that catch basin there is sewn up with dirt, a good, I don't know, six feet of pavement. Going.
You want me to let you finish, or if I have an issue about Carol, bring it up now?
Sure.
I didn't sign the seventy-six thousand dollar bill. Carol, you want to do the shoulders?
North Line Road? Separate price though, yep. That wasn't part of the paving. I don't know if you noticed on his estimate that he has the paving as one price and the shoulders as another. So they're actually separate, separated.
So those shoulders included in the warrant article, or is that coming out of something?
Warrant article, okay. Yep. I mean, I have a copy of that if you need it.
Yep. So at some point, he's going to do the other paving over on Dame Road, right?
He is. I talked to him at that point, you know, when he's going to do that, it looks like at this point where it's going to be September. The middle of September. As soon as I'd like to see it, but you know, I think we missed our window that we had prepared, you know, that he had to sign for us. Unfortunately, but September at this point.
When I read his paperwork, originally the lower part of Dame Road was a hundred eighty-six thousand dollars.
So that would be doing all of it. We're not doing all of it.
Okay, no, the lower section was one eighty-six.
Yeah, but that would be the lower.
But we're not, we're not doing all the lower section.
We're only doing a section of the lower section.
Okay. And we had a one eighty-six, two oh five.
Is that done?
And that was the lower section of Dame Road. It wasn't the section of.
Was that?
Last year's quote. This was June twenty-second of June twenty.
And I kept, because I kept that as, well, that's a, okay, that's not.
Well, we talked about a number of different alternatives and one was paving the whole lower section. I think that's what that number represented. And we're not doing that because we don't have much money this year. So we're doing the bad section of the lower middle section, if you will. The section coming down from what you did last year, right?
Correct, but we never had the lower section on this year's schedule at all, you know, last fall.
Right, when we talked to Frank in the spring, one of the alternatives we looked at was mixing things up a little bit, including doing the whole lower section. And my memory is that we ruled that out, that they're just, we didn't have enough money to get all the way to the corner.
So we need to, maybe in September, once he's finished, catalog for ourselves what exactly happened this year. I mean, at some point in time, we got to move off of North Line and Dame, we got to venture out into the rest of our territories.
Right, we do.
So maybe next year's warrant article has to reflect that.
This is where I'm coming from. As of the twenty-fourth of July, if you go to the last page of the budget, we have left in the warrant article one hundred and two thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars. And that is the paving budget. And that is to do a section of Dame Road, correct?
We're only doing a section of Dame Road this year, okay?
And it's also the total shoulder estimate, just for what we were going to have done, was twenty-one thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars. This was as of June twenty-second.
Well, I think the numbers don't reflect that we're not paving the top section of Dame.
I'm going by exactly what I copied from the minutes of the year.
But the twenty-one thousand included graveling the top section on the road edges, so we got to subtract that off as well.
Well, what I remember, what I remember is that we went through this whole discussion and we, and we came up with numbers that worked. And that included doing the piece on North Line and doing that lower middle section on Dame Road, including the shoulders. And, and within the warrant article authorization, we had enough money to do all that.
And you encompassed some too, didn't you, for Dame Road?
Uh.
I can look at up road.
That's for the culvert up at the top.
Okay.
We did, yep. And that's, I don't think it's been done yet, right?
It says top of Dame Road.
Okay, you have to turn the page, turn the page one more. On Dame Road, section two. This, what's, one oh nine. We have sixty, we have totals of eighty-four thousand. And that's for replating, paving, base coat. And when you say compaction, is that compacting the tile? Then it says, no, I'm confused now. That's actually when they regrind, when they grind up the old pavement, they water it and compact it in. And then they put down the base coat. We currently have in the budget, a hundred and two thousand, two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Do, do the pavement section of Dame Road.
Yep.
Do the shoulders on that project. And to do the shoulders on North Line Road that was just repaved. Okay. I had the figures up there, more than a hundred and two thousand dollars, overspending the warrant article, but we can't do. Well, am I doing something wrong here? I think we're close. I think we're close on the numbers as far as getting it done. And worst case scenario, we'll probably just have to put the gravel down ourselves on one section, not both sections.
Or find the money someplace in the budget too.
But yeah, I mean, right now, we're within a few thousand dollars of being.
Even, even though you've overspent the spring maintenance by thirteen-six, that still leaves you with forty-four thousand dollars in the summer maintenance. So we've still got, I don't know what your plans are for that forty-four grand.
Well, we're ditching and stuff now, taking care of shoulders, stuff like that. And again, I think we can, if we're short by a little bit, I'll have to take it out of summer to do the gravel or something like that. I think we're very far behind a few thousand dollars of being.
We've got a third of our, a third of our winter budget under spent, so.
Yep.
We entered the last many years with a significantly less money than that. Seem to have come out the other side. So I think there's some room to get some of these things done. But if you're not, if, if, if that twenty-one grand that you were talking about on the shoulders, that isn't going to happen.
Well, it's not all twenty-one thousand. We're not doing twenty-one thousand dollars for the shoulder work.
Okay.
We're just not doing the top section of Dame, so that'll be significantly less.
The other thing is, are there outstanding bills that haven't been submitted yet?
Not that I'm aware of.
As far as road agent budgets, you know, each of the last nine years, a lot of the road agent to go substantially over his budget. Last year was thirteen thousand. Year before that, it was thirty-nine thousand. Year before that, twenty-nine thousand. This is the year, having to build in the library, going after a police station.
Well, keep in mind, the paving has changed substantially from what we started with this year. What we had planned on was, we prepped for it and got it all ready, and then we didn't end up doing that section.
Right, and we changed it based on the road conditions that developed over the winter, which I think is.
And the budget kind of went out the window for what we were trying to accomplish.
And he's, he's at fifty percent. I mean, I'm a lot less concerned than I was a year ago or two years ago.
I think that's.
I mean, it's July twenty-fourth and you've still got fifty percent of the budget left.
I'm trying to be a coworker with you, please don't consider this criticism.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
You've got some other summer maintenance issues. What are we doing with trees, anything?
So, we're gonna, what we did last year, I don't know if you recall this, but we marked all the trees because Lloyd actually had a good idea about getting an estimate and getting something developed for this year anyways. So I have a couple people looking at them, so we can get an idea of what we're talking about for expenses. And that's why they're marked. We're going to do the worst of them this year that we can afford to do. So it is, you know, going to have, we're going to get some of the trees done here. But we got to pick and choose, there's just too many. I don't know if you noticed how many.
Eleven's are, yes. And I don't know how many of those the power companies should be taking care of. I look at it, or I drive, it seems like maybe we can get them enrolled in a few of them. Because it seems as though, I mean, they might fall on the road and we'll clean them up with a chainsaw, but if they pull down a power line, that's a little more than we can handle.
Yeah, I mean, they all have probably some liability towards a power line somewhere, for sure.
Yeah, I mean, and I didn't look this morning because I've gotten sick of looking, but there was one up by Bobby Moulton's on Led Hill. It was actually resting on the, the power line. Hopefully nobody took it down.
I'm not sure of that one. I know we took one down at the bottom of Led Hill that was resting on a power line last week. It was a dead birch tree that we took down. Actually, it wasn't the power line, it was the phone line.
Right.
We can't do it if it's on the power line, understood?
Right, yeah.
It's not the power company that's going to do it.
When you come to trees, yes, there was a proposal. Last year, I sat down with him. Last year, he spent in excess of twenty-one thousand, nine hundred dollars on tree work. So far this year, he has spent over ten thousand dollars, four thousand left in the tree account. However, the trees that were taken down on Dame Road, the bill was filed under summer maintenance, not under the warrant article road prep, not under trees.
It wasn't, I thought it was under trees.
No, I just did the, I just did the program budget.
It must have been there, because it was supposed to be in the trees.
Yeah, I'm not married to the four grand that he's got left in the tree account. I mean, I think.
Well, it sounds.
I mean, historically, we've co-mingled all these numbers, so if you've got fifty-four thousand dollars, or forty-four thousand dollars left in summer and you got four grand of trees, you've got forty-eight thousand bucks.
Well, and not too many years back, there were basically two lines in the road agent budget, winter maintenance and everything else.
Yep.
And, so.
That was a while ago.
Huh? What's that?
That was a while ago.
Okay.
That was when I first started.
Yeah. And, and so separating it out is somewhat instructive, but the main thing is to manage the resource that we have to get stuff done. So with respect to the trees out there, it sounds like your approach is reasonable. You've identified trees that really need to come out. Prioritize them, get the worst of them as the money allows. And somehow the money allows depends upon how many storms we have in the summertime and that kind of thing, to take the resources in other direction. And, and like with lots of other things around the roads, we keep working at it. So hopefully every year, we get a little more of the worst of the stuff done and pretty soon, we're caught up on it.
I guess I took you off here.
Yeah.
Game plan, I apologize.
Yeah, no, but I want to look into that.
And let's, you know, let's not forget that some of those trees may not be on town right away, at which point they start to become a homeowner's issue.
There's probably a few of those, I'm sure.
Yeah, that's the main, you know, cost of ownership. And I'm just going to continue because we're going to move on, but roadside mowing's going to happen when?
The roadside mowing?
Yeah.
Monday.
Okay.
The mowing on Monday. It was a health issue, they would have started the regular, I guess it was a health issue.
The stop lines look nice, by the way.
Oh, good.
I know what's happening.
Do they work?
Well.
Probably not, I'm not sure.
I, I, I have no idea. And.
If they work ten percent of the time, that helps.
Yep.
An incremental.
I guess I never thought that I had, does it make sense to put the word stop on both sides of one seventy-one? Maybe that'll help a little bit, a little bit more riding on the road before the stop line.
I still think one of those solar powered stop signs.
Well, yeah, and again, for a thousand bucks, get one with flashing LEDs on it, solar powered unit. So that's probably where we, where we need to go. And, and I've seen them in use other places. This is different than the ones that the state had over it, where they put the traffic circle in at twenty-eight. This is just one with LEDs around the edge of the stop sign that flash on and off. Just calls attention to the sign, not going to make somebody stop, but if, if there's an issue with somebody not being aware that there's a stop sign there, it's pretty hard to say, oh, I didn't see the stop sign when the damn thing is flattered. So that's probably something we ought to pursue.
Very soon. So we had to repair some washouts along roadages caused by heavy rains so far this summer. And we are now reditching some of the areas along roadages that have filled in over the years as part of our regular maintenance. And I ordered some no docking sun, no docking between ten PM and six AM for Union Wharf, Lake Street, Melvamore, as well as no parking signs between the ten PM and six PM.
Thank you.
I did go down there and I checked it out. Too late, it does need more maintenance, in question.
Yeah, there was a pontoon boat down Union Wharf for three days on the north side of the, was that yours?
No, I don't own a pontoon boat. But yeah, there was one there this morning as well. And then when we have the fifteen minute parking sign, there was a boat tied there almost overnight as well. I'm having my guys spin that sign so it's facing out instead of, you know, I think they'd be able to see it when they're backing in, to watch the boat, but.
Well, I think we need to talk to the chief about it, because there's no consequence to breaking the law and the waters.
So the whole knee ladder that's on the cluster pilings on Melvamore are being renewed as we speak. They were put on with weird looking screws, not normal screws.
And they're being replaced with what?
No, they're not being replaced, we have people climbing up the pilings.
Right.
That's a problem for sure.
Yeah. Well, what kids do is they get up on top of them and dive off.
Yep. So these are the dolphins or these pilings that hold them?
Actually, the cluster pilings are three, the clusters are three.
Off, off the corners of the.
Yeah, you got to swim out and then climb up them.
Yeah.
Okay.
So somebody get the idea that, oh, if I just put these.
Ladders up.
Ladders up, they'll be easier to climb up, yeah.
Something we do as kids, right?
Yeah, no doubt.
And you're aware of the steamboat? There's no issues with steamboats coming in? I don't have an issue with it. I don't know if anybody has any other thoughts.
We ask the police for safety purposes and security, and we ask you whether it's safe for them to go there.
I think it'll be fine.
Yeah.
And it's not considered a, I mean, the swimming might become an issue, but.
But I don't think people are swimming that kind of year.
It's middle of September, yeah, so your, your usage of the home areas is down.
Right, yeah. I don't remember too many people swimming at that point. Also, we put back some of the rocks on the Bang Pon Beach that had pulled out, not really pulled out as much as probably somebody drove over them or something, but we put those back.
There was a person earlier this year kind of lunch with a fireage boat.
And then also, the boat ramp had a pothole on one side where somebody spun out, we filled that in some more stone. That's been filled in.
Which, which ramp was that?
Oh, on Merrill Lake.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Yeah, somebody got off the side and spun a hole in it. On another topic, and this is up to you guys, we want to create something to stop this or not, but we've had some new driveways paved, well, not new driveways, but old driveways that were hot topped this year. And they weren't done sort of the town specs where we'd say not to pitch water on, let the pitch down at one inch straight for that kind of thing, I think, you know, for the first four feet. They weren't, they just come straight down onto the, we don't actually have a requirement to pave existing driveway. If you're building a new house or you're installing a new driveway, you need a permit and then you have, you know, if you have the knowledge of, knowing that you're not supposed to do that.
On the permit, it's very.
You have to pave your driveway? I don't remember that.
No, it doesn't require you to pave it.
So it just water run on?
But it, but it does say the finished surface must slope away from the existing roadway surface.
Yeah.
So.
The only people that have to sign these are when they're requesting a new driveway. Give them existing driveway that you've had for twenty, thirty years, and then you pave it. Because the ones that, you know, that I'm referring to had a little swale, so the water wasn't going on the road, but then when the hot top came in and filled that whole spot in, now it's itching towards the road. I don't know if that's something that we want to address in some fashion.
Well, I had it written the following way. What can the board assortment do to assist you so that newly paved driveways on New Road and other places get corrected to meet the letter and the spirit of the town regulations? That's how I'm phrasing my question.
Okay, well, the only way that we could correct it is if you get a hot top driveway, you still have to ourselves.
Wow.
And it's being inspected.
Yeah, I, I think the, but at this point, the way we correct it is we put the people on notice, they've got to fix it.
And you in the past have gone to paving companies, worked with them, haven't you?
We have, and we are on this, the most current problem that we have. And actually, Jack Pross and I, he called, actually, Jack and I were talking about it and I happened to call, the paving company called, and we were both standing there talking about it. And, you know, came to an agreement of what he was going to do.
I mean, there's no fee involved in this driveway permit?
Right.
It's just a permit. So to extend that to driveway alterations of any kind, be it paving or widening or whatever, I mean, I don't see that that's an owner's thing as far as putting that on the back for the property owner. I mean, they, they just need to do it.
Well, there's a reason that we don't have driveways running water directly onto the road. And so if it's originally built to the spec and then it's repaved and it dumps the water in the road, it's as bad as if we're not built to spec to begin with, right?
Correct, and that's what's happening.
Right, and.
So maybe we need to.
It sounds like you and Jack have the problem solved.
Well.
For one driveway.
Yeah, they don't have the problem solved. In fact, I mean, I got, I'll make a motion that we require all driveway alterations, including pavement, to be a permitted event using the driveway permit.
That's something you could take to a planning board, because that's the planning board requirement.
It's, I think it's a requirement of the code, right? In the, I'm, I'm sorry, the zoning, it's in our zoning words, I believe, right? So that, I, I would have to, I mean, I think, I absolutely support what you're saying.
I agree with you.
Whether we as a board can, if it involves a change to the code, to the regs, then, then it has to go.
Well, we're not really changing the regulations because we're not saying, okay, you have to build your driveway twenty feet wide or whatever. We're just changing the permit requirement so that the town's put on notice that there's something happening. So the permit does anyway.
Well, while we're talking about.
I'm sorry.
Lloyd.
Just to finish.
Big boys, sir.
I think without our board's action, I can kind of see Jack and, and our road agent feeling like they're not completely empowered to do something, so.
Yeah, well, I second your motion, and.
What is the motion again?
The motion is, would be that the town now requires any alteration, including pavement of the, of a current driveway, to have a. of the, of a current driveway to have a driveway permit application filled out.
You second that?
I did. Any further discussion? I'm in favor of that, so all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, when we're talking about driveways, it segues into what I have here. And you and I have talked about this and, boy, you really educated me. The other thing is, uh, driveways in neighboring towns, they talk about it all the time.
Yeah.
Uh, they saw the problem. There's not a road in town that couldn't be reengineered. I, I have three examples. Number one, the driveway culvert on the house on Ham Hill is non-functional the last two years since the utility company deposited a number of log-sized butt ends in the ditch. This last storm, the water was running to having the road. You know what I'm talking about?
I do, and that's something that's on the list we're gonna-
And that's, that's, that's right. Uh, and this is not a criticism. The next thing is between Winter Circle Road and Schoolhouse Lane, there's an unused temporary driveway that's not being used. It did not meet the planning board legal requirements when it was put in. My question is, not to put you on the spot, but what does temporary mean? You know what I'm talking about, right?
I do, yeah, I, I think, you know, it, it was because they were logging and burying and something.
Right, and they, but they haven't for two years. Another example is, what is the report? If I could interject here on that particular issue before we move on and I forget about it. So when you put in a temporary access for logging, isn't the requirement that it be restored, that the ditch be restored after the logging is completed? How, how's that work?
It is, but I, I do know that they talked to me ahead of time about that, saying this would be a future thing. So they did put the culvert in and whatnot. I was unaware that they, you know, that it was early something in place that they had to meet. I was not aware of that, cause I-
Yeah, I don't think the planning board approved that as an entrance.
Correct.
Cause it's too close to the crest of the hill. So it-
Yeah, I wasn't aware of that at the time when we, when I talked to them about it. But-
I mean, a guy across the street from my sister's put in a temporary permanent now, I guess.
That's a handful, right?
Uh, to continue, uh, what is the requirement or expectations for private people diverting water onto the towns right away? Water cascades a half a mile down the sides of Winter Circle Farm, and it's an impervious surface. The private contractor recently diverted the water on the right side ditch under the road through a small culvert, under their road, small culvert. It now, water comes down on the left-hand side. It makes a right-hand turn into your ditch and goes uphill. You look at it, the last two storms, guess what happened? They have a screen up that that material is coming down. Um, talk about being a different type of construction, you wouldn't do it, sir. Uphill would be tough, but, um-
So water is gonna go downhill, we know that. I'm unclear where you are on that, if you're going to end up in that ditch line somewhere.
That's right, the ditch line goes down the road. They put the culvert under, at an angle, under Winter Circle Farm. It empties into the ditch parallel to Ledge Hill Road, and you have to go up two degrees, fifty feet for a culvert.
To go across Ledge Hill?
That's correct. It's two, first of all, it's two ninety degree turns.
It doesn't seem right either, but, uh, I, I haven't really looked at it to, to see exactly.
No. Aren't these people supposed to come to you and say, we're gonna be dumping water into the road system? Can I have a conversation with you? They did it, they did it another place, didn't they?
Uh, they have. I mean, I don't know there's a requirement for it, but it's certainly worth looking at. It was something I was seeing on the road.
I'll talk to them, I'll look at it. Right, well, I can have a driveway or a private road, but I can't just indiscriminately dump water. And of course, the problem with Ledge Hill Road is, it's just like around New Town Lake, isn't it? Nobody's fault, but water is always going downhill.
Yeah, stopping that.
Thank you.
No, I think that was the last thing I had.
Do we have a number for Willand? I mean, I know there was a-
Oh, I guess there is more to talk about, yes. So I guess I'm not, I'm un, I'm unclear of what we were, were trying to do. Last week, we threw out a lot of ideas. Am I supposed to get a number together for all the ideas that we talked about?
There's more correspondence from landowners that might include it.
Okay, give me a, give me a synopsis.
Uh, one is Posden.
Yeah.
Uh-
Hudson?
Yeah.
Okay.
And the other one is, I forget the name, have you read the, yeah?
I s- I s- I didn't see anything in there, I saw-
Steve Allen.
Steve Allen?
I didn't see the one from Steve Allen.
Yeah, I didn't either, yeah.
He came in the office and he was curious about, um, how the town's gonna handle payment from him and Skip because he's trying to close on sale on his property.
Right.
And the new owner wants to know that their contribution of the forty thousand will be, it's, it takes-
And you put it in the correspondence, I didn't see-
I put it in the Friday bulletin.
Friday bulletin.
I see it orange, full dollars, underneath, um, voice tape.
Oh, okay.
More road concerns?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, so I need to come up with a number for all the ideas that we talked about.
Yeah, and I think you need to, you need to itemize it, cause I don't know that, I mean, we can have a discussion. I don't know that we can reasonably charge the landowners with all of the changes that were discussed while I was there.
Well, first of all, there's no money in this year's budget to do anything.
Right, but we're gonna have fourteen thousand dollars from the landowners that are there to do some of it. But it's gonna become, we, we need to have a number that we can, we can put together a, um, what is that called? Tax?
Betterment.
Betterment.
Yeah.
So we need to start the betterment process. And maybe we, you know, we don't, can't spend the money until we have it, obviously, but that would be in March's budget.
So, so when we, yeah, and when we met last week, we talked about two different ways to handle the money coming from the two individuals that had pledged to put the money up. One was to have them donate it to the town. And, and, uh, we, we would accept that as a, you know, unanticipated donation and expand that. The other one was to have you, your company do the work and they pay you directly for up to whatever amount they were gonna put into it, and then the rest of it would become town expense. But, uh, as I recall, last week, the first thing we talked about your guys doing was widening that, the corner out a little bit at the, at the intersection with the mountain road. Right?
Well, we talked about that. I guess we didn't prioritize-
Right.
Which was gonna be done first. I mean, it certainly could be done. Uh, we can widen that corner.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, you know-
You take it down sort of needs to-
If they wanna bring it down, you know, that, that-
Or what if you had a budget?
We won't know until we do some test holes on probably both sides. But that's probably a little bit bigger project. Obviously bringing the, uh, the whole hill down, which would be fantastic if it's possible. We don't know that yet, but, um, and then, you know, it really could be paved on the end as well. We use the first fifty feet so that when you take off, you're not standing trying to get out of there when it kind of comes around the corner or whatever.
Well, what I remember we talked, are talking about was not changing that pavement at this point, but, but because of the visibility issue on that tight corner, you'd mentioned opening it back a little bit. Uh, and I don't know what the most important things in terms of road, of, of maintainability on that road are. You're, you're, you're the guy that runs the pot trucks. And, and in my mind, that's the number one thing that we need to do in terms of work on it is to make it so that you can do winter maintenance on it. So maybe, maybe the corner at one seventy-one doesn't have a great effect on, on that piece of it. I mean, that's, clearly it in, it improves the safety situation, but in terms of being able to clear snow, get the, get the trucks in and out and clear snow in the wintertime, um, I think that's the biggest piece. Our conversation about snow removal.
First came turned around and what, uh, which one?
First of all, do you have the equipment that can get in and out safely?
Yes.
Okay. Other thing is, what if we paid a, a person to do it? You're gonna have to add to your budget just one removal and it's like pounding Phineas Graves Road. You're gonna get stuck, aren't you?
That's why we send a big truck up for that usually, so we don't get the big truck stuck and put us on a commission from the young.
Remember I talked about the number vendors, what I suggested?
Yep, but that, does that still come out of our budget or?
You have to. What if, what if a person piled the road and we send them a letter, thank you for a hundred dollars a storm for your donation to the town? Is it tax deduction?
Somebody can ask for that.
Yeah, we need a little, a little more certainty, I think.
Right.
I mean, I, I guess my, if we move back to what we need to do to the road, I'd have to say that it, it's to make it a serviceable class five road, not to make it the best class five road. And blocking on it, it's as good as the Mare Vista Road, or as I'm concerned. It's probably as good as most of Phineas Graves Road, with the exception of some of the ditch work. But I think pushing it beyond that level of goodness would be a little bit of a stretch. And I think we need to get people used to having it be a town road before we start really tearing into it. So unless there's something that, I'm sorry, unless there's something that makes it hard or really hard or impossible to maintain, I'm not sure how much more money than that I want to spend. Know what I'm saying?
I do, yep, cause, you know, I did talk to, um, Mr. Posden about it and, you know, he's obviously not even interested in doing any of this work. He doesn't want the road to be a class five.
Right, right. And most of the area that needs attention is beyond his driveway anyway, so he doesn't care. Right, he can get in and out. It's, it's further uphill that needs-
The way down on one seventy-one, so.
True, but he kind of expressed that not everybody in there was on the same page too.
Well-
You know, that's all sort of water over the dent. Now, it should have come to the town meeting and, and voted, or more importantly, gotten up and said something.
Right.
So we've gone through that process, he missed that vote.
Okay, so that's a close case, okay.
We're not going backwards, it's now a class five road.
Yeah, and the other thing is that overlaying all of this is, is the thought that the guy that's been maintaining that road in the winter for years isn't gonna be doing it, may not be capable of doing it for much longer. So they, they, well, that's what he, you know, that's what he engaged-
I'm not gonna be capable of doing mine.
Right, no, at, at any rate, so, so then it becomes the, okay, uh, everybody's benefited from the fact that Skip has taken care of that road forever in there. Uh, that's gonna go away, uh, at least in some people's minds, I think, having the town take it back to class five deals with the issue, uh, better than, all right, now we gotta find somebody else to do it when Skip is no longer, you know, uh, able to do it. Um, so I, I, I'm sensitive to everybody's interests, um, but it, it is a town road. Uh, we are gonna resume regular maintenance on it. Uh, some of the things we talked about were things that, that you felt needed to be done so that you could actually clear snow safely and, and somewhat efficiently. Some of it, some of the ditching that we talked about was stuff that needed to be done so that the road surface doesn't continue to wash out, uh, which is bad for the lakes and streams, uh, as well as for the road to have the water keep coming down on the road, washing it out and back down in the environment. You know, it takes the, that's what pulls nitrogen and phosphorus into the water and runs it down toward the lakes.
Certainly needs some sediment catchers down there.
Right.
Yeah, just so, I, but you're not gonna get away from the, the washboarding on those, on the one big hill anyway, so we've got to-
That was very noticeable when we went up it. Yeah, yeah, put it in full drive just to prevent it from-
Yeah, he's kind of, probably, I mean, obviously gonna have to York or something a couple of times a year, but I see that hill getting paved at some point just to make life easier. But I don't know how much property on either side of the road is in, I mean, I know none of it's in conservation and some of it may be in current use. Um, so I'm not sure how effective an assessment's gonna be for, um-
A betterment?
A betterment, I keep forgetting the word.
Assessment, yeah. I think this is something positive. Isn't it nice that we have at least four out of five neighbors that are willing to, uh, work with the town? And pay for them. You know, it's like Zadi Dafam's, eleven families stepped up to the plate. You were able to pay for forty thousand and, and we also have some other resources in town. For example, we've never used it, the cities do, and that is when you register a car, five dollars is added to that for roads. You know, structural projects. Do you have anything else to add?
Uh, no.
So-
Fair idea.
Can we have a date certain when we can have a number for, um, Willand Road? Let's say Monday or a week from today. I'd like to get this thing settled-
Okay.
So that we can go forward with, with Steve and, and Skip. And we'll know in what direction we're going, and we have to answer questions at some point.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
Okay, so I will have the number for you for, for before next Friday, so you have a-
Perfect.
Perfect.
Uh, so, step back, the question about the, the monies that Steve and Skip are to put into this, is it make more sense that that be a direct transaction? More that it comes to town and then be-
A direct transaction.
So, these guys do the work. Those guys pay Jim to do the work.
Yeah.
And, uh-
I don't know if I like that all that much, but-
No, you and I talked about it and what did I suggest to you?
And Jim doing it as a private contractor.
Right.
And Eagle Mia, for example, you did that as a private contractor with our road ends and a lady wanted some drainage, right?
Right.
You know, it's been a good partnership and it's been a reasonable partnership, hasn't it?
Yes.
I made that comment to you and what did I say to you, the reason why? Number?
Uh-
What, what do you do with the material?
We're gonna move the material up to the top and fill it with the low spots.
On the class six road. You can do that as private, as a private contract. The reason for that is, there's two sand pits on the other side of that class six, isn't there? And if we needed to do some road work or whatnot, there's two sand pits in town. You imagine taking your tri-taxel and all the way past the school and up there and add some bucks, right? I, I, I was thinking outside the box with you and I thought you were very inventive. Just a thought. And I'm, I'm, I'm piggybacking on what he suggested.
The only problem I see with it, and I'm more than happy to be outside the box. I don't like being in boxes. But we have to do a sequence of events and at some point in time- but we have to do a sequence of events and at some point in time, we have to take that, we have to vote that we're taking that road over, like as of today. If we wait until the work is done by Jim and paid for privately, then Jim is working on a class six road. And he is the road agent, whether you like to call him a road agent or not during that event. And I just see the bottom letter having a real problem with us trying to skirt the regulation. I, I think, I think it'd be cleaner if we came up with a number from Jim, put that to Steve and Skip, step the check and at the same moment, take the road over. I mean, I, I just.
That's fine, yeah.
I just worried about falling into a quagmire with my numbers.
Yeah.
I, I do know the amount that they're going to contribute is fourteen thousand. So I didn't know if, anything over ten, this is to have a public hearing, so I have to advertise.
Yeah, we can advertise.
Or unless you wanna take two seven thousand dollar things, then it'd be no, yeah, there's no such thing.
No, 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 no. No, I don't, this, this is not the, oh, we'll take nine, 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 nine from this guy and then.
We're just separate, I don't, no, but I can, so I can post it in the public hearing. I know this gentleman wants to get his sale done.
Right.
And they can, they can, uh, I, I think we're better off posting it as a public hearing. And at that point in time, it's not just to accept money, but it's to accept the road. And they can come in and voice their concern.
It's gonna be open where people can, can come in?
Right, well, sure.
Public hearing, yes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right.
So then we'll, I noticed your notebook is closed, can I ask, ask you a few questions?
Sure.
Uh, first of all, let's start.
Second, three minutes.
Four.
Yes, I'll go fast, just give yes or no answers. First of all, thank you for stop lines, repair work to Union Warf, it's now safe. Thank you for removing gravel from the Union Warf concrete section. Thank you, Bill Engbo, no power sign, we're being removed. First beach, thank you for removing the broken dart that was floating in Nero Lake, uh, on the Wayne Pond Road. Thank you for what you're doing with Melvin Warf. Uh, what is the timeline to start the shoulder work on Dergan Road as we turn off from one seven one?
In August, we'll do it this month.
Okay, what did the homeowner say about it?
Haven't talked to him yet, that is technically, that is tempting.
And are there any concerns with the new foreman from Tuftonborough, uh, from the DOT garage? I know when I spoke to him, he had no issues. It, it's catch basin, right?
Correct, last year when we talked about, you can do whatever we need to do.
Well, there's a new one since then. Uh, Ledge Hill, uh, road ditch, what a great job you did. That pipe comes from that catch basin, correct?
Can you repeat that?
On Ledge Hill Road by Morals, you did ditch work.
Uh, oh, yes, yes.
That pipe comes out of that catch basin.
It does, correct.
Whose responsibility is it to damage it? It's rusted and it's bent over.
We were just talking about that through the day. I'm assuming it's on our road and it was launched it.
Next thing is, I was asked, while paving, is there a company that will pave that swale so erosion won't take place? We're gonna have to pave the swale on the other side.
Well, I'm sure there's a company that would do it, it's a matter of, we think that's a good idea, I guess.
Turnover road, right? I mean, you guys made, it, it eroded, you guys put the rock in there and it eroded on both sides.
Well, we moved it back, I, I guess I wanna see what happens. Let's just see what happens for a little bit, get a couple rainstorms and I would like to see the grass grow in there, which.
Okay, I, I gotta move along. Nineteen mile bay parking lot, when is the gravel at the edges of the parking lot gonna be pulled back from our snowplows that deposited over the years?
Uh, I can pull that back, I just didn't wanna send a, a machine down there just to pull back that, you know, a little bit of gravel, and it really wasn't a lot, but, uh, when we're in the area with the machines, we'll certainly do that.
I'm thinking ahead here. Uh, the cell tower, have you received the paperwork of where the cell tower, they wanna put it out behind your facility?
Has that changed since the last time that we met about that?
No.
Two months ago.
I have concerns about the fall zone.
Yeah, but it is going at the very end of the arc, uh, parking lot at the back, correct?
And it's part of your.
Not behind the.
So.
Salt sh- salt sh- shit, right.
And if I understand correctly, part of it is in the, your facility is in the fall zone, correct?
Well, yeah, I believe the fall zone is thirty, yeah.
I, I have, I have concerns with that and I don't need your guys at risk.
I, I don't have concerns with it.
Okay, so the insurable, insurable event.
Right.
Um, heating system, that gonna be a capital improvement?
I think it's been on our list for a while.
Okay, I'm thinking outside the box here.
I apologize, I'm gonna have to take my leave, you guys can come without me.
All right. Do I stop or do I continue?
Well, keep going, why not? I've been until eleven.
Be safe, thank you.
But it is good for them, but it'll probably be, not be this, after two weeks.
Yes, and we have a heating system in Melbourne that, that needs attention. The fire station has serious issues with its current system and the chief has put us on notice that we need to be evaluated out. We have questions about the three-phase electric heating system going in the police station and we have yours. I'm wondering if my computers can rebundle these issues. That, that's where I'm coming from, so.
Okay, I mean, I don't have a problem with that. Our system is working, it's just very, very bad and outdated, but.
But you also now have equipment that has unique diesel additives and hydraulic additives. You get called to go to an accident to fan, it doesn't need to take a half hour for your truck to warm up.
If you leave it outside, you're correct, that's what I'm looking for.
Right, yeah. Uh, speaking of the town truck, is a year ago, the inner fenders were gonna be installed. There's money in the budget for that.
Yes.
The other thing is, where is it getting inspected this year?
Uh, I guess I haven't had to solve that yet.
I'd like to have a real honest conversation with you. I've taken, taken a look at the truck, uh, this is not a criticism, it's a unique piece of equipment, it's hardworking. When it comes to our fire trucks, our police cruisers, our Bobcats, uh, I wanna make sure there's resources that, that pay one. Also, it's, it's, I don't wanna use the word properly maintained, but if we're energetic with our maintaining, it's a better trading value in a few years, isn't it?
Correct.
Uh, this is not a criticism, I want to support, big reasonable investment in that. I have some thoughts on it. The other thing is, on June ninth, I asked about road grader bills, did you get a copy of that?
I did, and it's the same question we had in the last couple of years as for, I've asked that before.
Yeah.
And the answer was, it's like a cutting edge on the flower.
Mm-hmm.
You guys pay for those, it doesn't do other, drive, doesn't do other roads, it just does the town roads.
Wear item?
It's a wear item, the town's always paid for.
I was asked the following question and I'll pass it on, and after three people, separate people asked me about it. So, somewhere along the line, it's become custom, I can't find it in writing anywhere, that the selectmen pay for private equipment to be repaired.
Not been, not paying for any repairs, just the age.
But how much of, this is on a road grader owned by whom?
It's, it's owned by my company.
Okay.
But it only does the town roads.
That's the only thing it does?
Yeah.
'Cause I, I mean, I don't like prorating if it's, if you grade something else on your own and get paid for it.
And I get that, yes, but so far I have not done that, so.
Same, same with the snowplow, uh, they just, they don't do.
I accept the trucks that will do that.
Um, I'm thinking of optics and I'm trying to say this in a kind, it's professional way, it is not, the right thing to do personally.
Would you, I, I mean, would you feel more comfortable if you upped the rate to include it? I mean, I, I, I think that's what's going on.
That's where we'd be going to.
Yeah, I mean, I, it's not gonna be that, you don't get a new cutting edge, it's just where are you putting it? Are we paying for it as a wear item or are we paying for an hourly rate?
Mm-hmm.
It's more controllable the way it sits, 'cause if we asked Jim to provide us with the bill of sale for the wear, for the cutting edge, I'm sure he could. He includes it in an hourly rate and it just starts getting buried in the numbers, you know, we have no idea what.
I mean, with either way, have you guys decided something?
Uh, I'm sure you are, I, I just think the way it sits right now, it's probably.
Chip here, it's cause we're running out of time. I have the, when are we gonna order the new standards and have a state bid?
So I have, I've put in two calls already and they're working on numbers for us, 'cause I guess because it is a state bid, it's more paperwork on that end.
This is where I'm coming from, is, uh, legislature, the town meetings that go do it, that integral part of, uh, doing the roads. The other thing is, rec area, fire department, by Gallagher, uh, another department, trying to get the vendors we do business with, they're excellent, but their suppliers, projects have been delayed a month. And, but this is what I'm concerned with, you don't, doesn't need to be, um, October first. The other thing is, uh, is, is my suggestion is that we need to put the order in like we did our police cruiser and be, but first one, that goes to Indiana.
I didn't have any concerns when they asked about it, they didn't have any concerns about knocking over them. I think there are any stocks, so.
And, and will, will give us trade in on our terms?
Yeah, I have to send them pictures.
It's better to have them stored in our lot than have it there, so.
Yep.
Um, you're done?
Yes, thank you.
Tyler Phillips is coming in on Monday, ten o'clock, talk about the Union Warf project in Melbourne.
Lake Street?
Lake Street project, gonna be involved in that discussion. Welcome to come in.
Okay, what time is that?
Ten o'clock.
Is that you?
Uh, no, it's at the.
I'm not counting, I'm sorry.
Where am I? Operator, operator, trace this, come and tell me where I am.
I'm also with you, Jim, thank you for coming in and thank you for what you do.
Great.
Um, did you see this note? You have your bare talent. I'm sorry, I see the humor in that.
So.
That did scare me a little bit, it won't, it won't work.
Thirty-nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars upside down, oh, unused side flag.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Really?
He stays, my friend.
Okay. As long as we don't have to cut him a check out of our own money.
Is there anything else?
I'm sorry. I'll move, we, uh, agenda?
I'll second it, all those in favor say aye.
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 Was there anything new in legal, Karen? Really?